Everyone, welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners, held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is March 9, 2016. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Middle School Library. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I wish to thank the School Board of Directors, the Superintendent of Schools, and the Middle School Principal for accommodating our need to temporarily relocate our monthly meetings during the municipal campus renovation project. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who've placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to note that the Board just had a brief executive session dealing with a few legal matters, and I want to note that we're all here tonight except Commissioner Shum, who is out of town on business. I will entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township. Does somebody want to move that?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? Well, in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record in anonymous vote. We have no special reports or correspondence. We will now move to the first public comment period. The Board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The Board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the Board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. Do we have ... Brennan?
Hi, everybody. My name's Brennan Prime, 265 Northwestern Avenue. Since I was last before the Board, I see two new Commissioners, so congratulations to Commissioner Graham and Commissioner Maxwell on your recent election.
Thank you.
I'm coming to the Board tonight with a request. As you know, the TC property matter was before the Board in your workshop session on Monday and has been before the Planning Commission. Before the process goes further, I would like the Board to take an official position on the matter I'm about to bring forward. As you recall, during the public hearing process, the neighbors to the property pointed out that we thought there was a conflict between the requested zoning and the applicability provision of the AAA AQ1 zoning ordinance. Specifically, Chapter 114, Article 114, 3C1 of the Township Code states in part that "The AAA AQ1 district shall serve as an alternative form of development in the AA, AA, and AAA residence districts subject to four specific conditions." One of those conditions is that the parcel of land fronts on a principal arterial road as defined in the Township Comprehensive Plan. Our Ridge Pike is one of the few roads in Springfield Township that's designated as a principal arterial. So my concern is that by having rezoned the entire front of the property to institutional, that the back of the property now is in an invalid state when it comes to its designation as AAA AQ1, or that at least that if the subdivision requests were to be approved, that that would be the case. So that's only my own reading of the zoning ordinance, but what I would like to request is that the township review this matter officially and take a position on the record stating whether or not you believe that there is a conflict between the zoning ordinances as they stand now or not. And that's really my only request, is to have an official position taken by the township so that the citizens can be aware.
Okay. Well, we ...
Okay.
I can't say we'll take a position, but I can say we can direct the solicitor to look at it for next month's meeting unless there's an objection, and we'll see what happens. Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
So you'll get that on the agenda for next month?
Okay. Okay, Joan?
Joan Parsons, 37 Hawkswell Circle. I just have some pictures I'd like to leave with the Board and also just bring up some items that are, you know, concerning, you know, where I live. I have some pictures here of the bridge behind my home at 37 Hawkswell Circle. And the night that it actually, the water came up over the bridge, and I mean, you are aware that I know that, but I thought it would be a good idea to show you that the water, it looked like Hillcrest Pond. So the water came all the way up to my property line, which is the open space, and it's also the watershed. And the water came almost that if it was like a hundred-year flood or whatever, it probably would come up into the property. I do have a walkout basement. So I wanted to leave these pictures just so that you can see. I know Glenn's not here, he's my Commissioner, so I'll leave it with somebody.
Okay.
Right now, the damming there, all that is still in there. You are aware of it, you know, it has to be cleaned out, you know, because it will create probably more, if we have another bad rain, it's going to, you know, flood more coming towards my property. I also have some pictures here that I wanted to leave on 50 Orland Mill Road, of which some of the Commissioners came out with the lighting, and the lighting was corrected. And I thank you for the bus depot lighting. That, you know, again, that took a couple of years to get done, but at least it got done now. So I do appreciate the people that came out, Glenn and Jim.
And Don.
So, and who?
Don.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, Don, and also the engineer and Dave Micklebacher, who is an electrician. So these are pictures, just to let the other Board members, since you weren't available, to take a look at these. Now, I also talked to Kevin Bauer, the PA DEP gentleman, and he was very nice about the slime and whatever that was coming near 1 Hawkswell Circle, which is down from, you know, is an environmental. He basically said that when he, when he looked at it, that it was dry, it was really hard to make any kind of determination because of the fact, you know, I said, "Well, next time I will get samples of water." But I do have pictures here, just so you can see, and I do say, you know, I have it labeled. Some of the gravel from the bus depot came under the fence, and that all laid in the area where it had been sod down and it had been a grass seed and it had straw. So all that was, you know, the silt that was holding up everything at the fence was all torn down because the massive amount of water that was coming into that circle pushed it down. So I have all these types of pictures that you can take a look at. I also have, there was also an issue about, my husband went down to take some pictures, and the smell of diesel actually was there the day he did it. Now, I know with, I just want to show you that the buses back up to the fence, and I know they back in now because that's supposed to make them leave with less noise, but now we have the smell of diesel. So at the one section where these buses are backing up, there's a home that's like right there. So my question then for Mr. Bauer is, you know, the safety of the diesel smell at that area so close. So I do have that picture, then I have more pictures of, you know, what happened.
Did you talk to Mr. Bauer about that, or?
Yes, I did.
What did he say?
He said, "Well, it's hard to determine what's coming from there because of the fact that the day he was there, he didn't smell anything." Now, the day my husband was there, the buses weren't coming in. Now, he just opened the car door to get out, and the smell hit his, you know, it was pretty bad. But what I want to show you, and then here's more pictures of, whoops, sorry.
Uh-oh.
Of the amount of water.
We can't get there.
I know.
We're close.
I just think it's a good idea that you, you know, see all this.
That's great.
Okay. You know, where this is, this was after, this was like a week after, and it was still puddling. That's when we saw all the other.
I can see it.
Yeah. And then you can see here, this is where the foam that we saw, the white. Now, he thought it was, believe it or not, what?
What is that?
That's the foam area. That was like what we saw in that area, down near 1 Hawkswell. He said it could be milk from a milk carton because the dumpster there is rotted at the bottom, and it's so close to our, to the fencing, and he also said drywall. Just telling you what he told me. He is going to do a report. I also have, you can see here where the home, where the 1 Hawkswell Circle is and where the fence and the buses are. So if the buses weren't in that section, they would not get the smell of any diesel because it's so close. So that's that area. Now, that, this homeowner did not get in there until December, this December, so it wasn't even finished. It was like the last one that they built. So, and then this was the light before they fixed it, but now they put, you know, caps on it. Okay, so now we get down to this. This is, this is, this is the lot. This is the bus depot. Now, I counted about eighty, some 89 buses or whatever, so I know you're going to have 181. So my question is, I took these pictures, and it looks like the lot's pretty full, and it looks like the cars are pretty, are all over the place. So my question to Glenn was, did they already put in the 181 buses and the additional employee cars? Has that?
They haven't filed the plan yet, right? So I can't.
No, the plan, the plan that we have, the chief is interested, and we have a copy of it, but it's just, it's too big for me to.
Right. Well, I can come and see it.
Okay.
Okay, so.
It's already on.
So my, this is looking.
It's a big board, right?
Yeah, and this is looking into the lot.
No, it's not. It's still huge.
This is looking into the lot. So all these buses go down here, and there's Lynn Avenue Homes, and behind there is 1 Hawkswell Circle. So they're all backing up. Now, the diesel smell, up here, you're into the driveway going in, but down here in the circle, you got the home. So in this back circle, where you go all the way back, those buses there, I think, is an environmental issue that you might want to take a look at.
We would have DEP because we don't have that expertise. So it's good you're talking to the right people.
Right, exactly. So my concern then is the buses that are so close to here and the diesel. And this is, this is before the 181 buses are going to come in. This was the other day. This is before the expansion of how many buses are there. So again, my concern is the flow of traffic and all that. And here, here are the cars, they're parked all over the place, the lady's in there trying to direct them. I don't know where she's going to direct them to because there's nowhere to put them. So over here, we have Orland Mill Road, where the, where the cars are all the way down on both sides. And I know Mr. Faust said he had plenty of room within the lot to house everything, and that's fine. I just would like to know how.
And we did agree on Monday to take a look at that.
Okay.
So we'll get some relief there.
Yeah, so anyway, so I just think that it's a good idea to let you know what's going on in that lot because you have the 50 homeowners and I, and my house, I feel I don't want, you know, any of the value to come down. Now, Mr. Bauer was very nice. He said I could call him anytime, he's going to email me. He said if I have any concerns, he'll come back out. It was really hard. He said, "I need to look at something when it's happening, not after it's dried up." He said, "The dumpster is definitely a problem. That has to be, you know, it's just, it's all rotted." Now, I went back to the Planning Commission, and I was looking at the 100 buses and then 64 cars, then I saw the 181, and then with 90 to 100 cars to be, to have, that would be enough for 181 buses. So my concern on that was, again, looking at the lot now and trying to visualize where these are going to go. I think as a taxpayer, I would like to know how you think that's all going to get on there.
Okay, well, that's all on the plan, and you're certainly welcome to look at the plan. If there's a problem outside the plans, we can't change the plan, it's done.
Right.
But if there's a problem with spillover, like you talked about, that we have the right to do.
Right.
And we will.
Now, on the stormwater management, and again, that's, that whole issue has to be done now. The gentleman from DEP, I said to him, "Well, shouldn't that have been done before the development was started, was built?" He said, "I would think so, but you'd have to go back to the Commissioners to ask that."
I don't know what you mean.
Like the stormwater, like right now, at that, at the circle there where it's 1 Hawkswell, the water that's flowing there, which I showed you the pictures, is coming from the bus depot. The thing, now they're saying that they have to go in and out and put pipes or something and redirect the stormwater management.
He would have approved stormwater plan, right?
Sure.
Yes, and he has to comply with that. So if there's a flaw in complying with that, we can enforce it.
Okay, so, so the Planning Commission, back on August 18, 2015, said there, there was a lack, a lack on detail included in the plan for stormwater management, comment number five. So I don't understand what they meant by that. Bob Skatowski.
That's not actually in their purview. That's the Township Engineers' responsibility, so, all due respect to our Planning Commission, that's something they don't look at.
That was a preliminary thing.
Yeah, and the water flow was coming off from when that old stone parking lot was put in, before Hawkswell Circle was put in. And now he's gone through land development, and now he has to put in this drainage line.
Okay.
So it's not, he's not behind the times, it's just the fact that that use was already there, but the problem is always occurring. Nobody saw it because it flooded. And so now, and now they have to address it because it's running.
Yeah, because Mr. Bauer said, I mean, just looking at the lot and looking at the, I mean, his actually remark was, "There shouldn't be any houses there." He says, "Because it sits high. The bus area sits higher than how the land is." I mean, and it's evident because of how it flooded, you know, how everything was coming from underneath there. Couple more things, and then I'm finished.
Sorry, who's good, Mr. Bauer is a DEP.
Are there streets dedicated yet, or are they still developed?
No.
Okay. So if residents, if we make, say we make Orland Mill no parking?
Orland Mill Road is actually a Township Street.
That's a Township Street, that's what I'm trying to figure out. We make that no parking, can the employees park in their development because it's not dedicated?
No, not without the permission of the developer.
That's okay.
And they're not, they're not dedicating the roads, are they?
Yeah, they, these will be dedicated.
So once they're dedicated, they could park there.
No, there's no parking there either. It's tight. Okay, now, here's the other thing I was asking. "The Planning Commission recommends the Township investigate to see if the plan conforms to PA Act 124 of 2008 regarding the idling of diesel engines, especially the provisions regarding the minimum diesel distance that diesel vehicles must be kept from air intake points for dwellings." Now, does that have anything to do with the closeness down at that end to Number 1 Hawkswell Circle?
It might.
So I'd like you to.
Who looks at that? Is that an engineering thing, or that's a simple statutory?
Yeah, I'm not sure. It might be PA DEP's. It's the force of the law.
Yeah.
So that's it.
You might bring that up with Mr. Bauer and ask, he may know off the top of his head of, oh, it's 100 feet, or oh, it's 20 feet.
Yeah, well, he said I had to come back to the Commissioners on everything I asked them.
Okay. If we heard of the smell of the diesel at 6 o'clock in the morning, Tuesday morning, it could be the eighth. Both Glenn and I were there, and we were raised at this location that Joan Parsons shown us. There were 12 buses parked there. We were there the whole time, except for, I think, one was still parked there when we left at around quarter to seven. And we didn't smell any diesel. The idle time was between 2 to 4 minutes, and you could see they were doing a walk-around check. They started the vehicles and did their safety walk-around check. We ran into the gentleman from Number 1 Hawkswell Circle, and he's not aware of the diesel smell.
No, my husband smelled it, yeah. We haven't talked to him. But the other thing is, when those lights on the top of the buses are going around and around and around, is that when they're idling?
Yeah, that's when the.
Because I have video that shows back in that end, I took video of 45 buses coming out one morning between 6 and 7, and down at the end, all the way at the end closest to Lynn Avenue, you know, where all that, you know, there's industry on Lynn Avenue on that side. And that one bus was blinking forever, it never stopped and never pulled out. And so I, you know, you know, was concerned about that, too. But I just wanted to, you know, give you all this information.
Great, you can give it to Don.
Oh, great. And, you know, Glenn's not here, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Do we have any other public comment for now? You'll get another chance later on. Okay, there being none, we'll move on to the committee reports. It shouldn't take very long.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I think there was more public comment.
You can come now if you want.
Evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Carla Green, 902 Summit Lane.
Samuel Green, 902 Summit Lane.
And I would like to first say thank you for serving. I do appreciate that. I know it takes up your personal time to do that and your family time to do what you're doing on this evening, and so I recognize that. I do work also and serve the community where I work, so I do understand the sacrifice that you do. And in serving, I did want to express a concern and to know how you would be addressing the concern. I do live at 902 Summit Lane, and so I am here to address and express a concern on record in regards to the sign that was built on 309. I have been a member of the Springfield community for over 20 years, first living on Paper Mill Road, my older two children going to the high school, all the way through school there, and now I have an 11-year-old that is now in 5th grade. So I love this community. I moved here purposely because I love living where I live. I love the diversity in this community, and so I'm committed to being here in Springfield. I am concerned, however, about several things. I moved from Paper Mill Road because a lot of cars were up and down the street, and so it was disturbing at night for my children at that time to have the light of the cars and the sound of the cars. We were fortunate to be able to move over to 902 Paper Mill Road. And I have an 11-year-old who is now sleeping with a blackout shade, as we are also sleeping with a blackout shade, because we have light coming into our window disturbing our sleep each night. I'm concerned about that. She's a gifted student, does well in school, likes to study, likes to play. I feel she should be able to sleep without the light coming into her room and disturbing in all different types of colors and commercials in the evening. So we purchased the blackout shades so that she can do that. And I do know there is a plan to have trees placed, and I wanted to ask the Commissioners as you serve us to really expedite that timeline for planting those trees. It is springtime. I now also have my grandson that stays with us often, he's four years old, and so I like for him to be able to look out the back window and see the deer that are still out there as long as they're there. And I like for her to be able to look out the window, and I like for her to have the window up when my husband is reading to them at night, as he does each night when he puts them to bed. So I'm asking you to just give us a timeline and to expedite that timeline for the planting of trees. I also would like to find out the exact hours when the sign is off, because I did notice afterwards that there are times when that sign is now turned off. On the way up here, my husband did notice it was 7:15, the sign is still on, it's dark, and the sign is still on, so we would then still have our curtains down. I don't know when the sign is off because I never open my shades in my bedroom. I did not, I feel like it is affecting the property value here where I live. When I come from my duties in the school district in which I work, and I come home, often I work at night or towards the evening, as you do, and when I ride into our cul-de-sac and I look up in the skyline and I see a great big movie screen, I'm disappointed by that because your home is your sanctuary. And so when I finish serving all day long and serving the children in that particular district, and I come home, I like to come home to a place that is my sanctuary, where I am putting into this community, where I am working, where we live, and where we are good neighbors for the people that are around us. I do appreciate you taking the time to listen to our concerns, and I'd like you to take that in consideration as you expedite that timeline. I'm hoping you will do that. And then would us, give us some information as to what time the sign is turned off and turned back on so that we can then sort of plan to open my shades and close them as springtime is coming, because I'd like my children and my grand, my child and my grandchild to enjoy that.
Great, thank you. Do you want to explain the time now?
You know what, I'm trying to remember, it's either 10 or 10:30, isn't it?
No, it's 7:30 in the evening. It's be turned off.
Temporarily.
Oh, temporarily. I was talking about the settlement agreement.
Yeah, right now, it's temporarily, it turns off at 7:30, and it's back on at 6:00 in the morning.
And then ultimately, is it 11:00 when's the?
I think it's 11 o'clock, once the trees.
11 to 6?
Yeah, once we get through this.
Once the landscaping's installed, he would go back to the terms of the settlement agreement, which I think are sign off 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM. But right now, they should be off at 7:30.
Only the one side is off, not both sides.
Okay, only the one side is.
And I think that's what Mr. and Mrs. Green is concerned, even though the one side is off, the glare of the sign still goes, but it does, you can still see it from their home. I think, I just got some material from our administrative offices to look into that. I also set up a meeting to speak to Mr. Barsky. He hasn't gotten back to that, so that once I do speak with him, I will be meeting with the residents, letting them know when that timeline is going to start, when the trees are going to be placed up in your area. I think there are other considerations that are going to be done, depending on the homeowners, where they live at. And I will be working diligently with Mr. Barsky to make sure that the promises that were made last year by him with the foliage will be given to each resident as promised.
Okay, we do appreciate that, and I do appreciate meeting with you, and we would like to stay vocal and involved in this case because it does affect my 11-year-old and our grandson, and it affects us actually because after working hard and serving, I like to sleep at night. I'm older now.
No, we appreciate that. We want the best possible outcome.
I'd like to be able to sleep at night, so I'd appreciate if you'd just give that your attention. My, my best-case scenario would be to take the sign down, and so I just want to put that on the record because I feel that that would be the best-case scenario. However, the second-case scenario in the trees, we really do need that expedited, spring is here. So I don't want to be here in September, having missed a summer, trying to wait to get trees planted.
Great, okay. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Do we have any other public comment at this point? Then we'll move on to the committee reports. I will start out as the Chairman of the Internal Affairs Committee. The first item on the agenda is the March bill listing. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the February check reconciliation in the amount of $2,401,027.37, and the March bill listing, the amount of $765,655.66. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Well, in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Please record in anonymous vote. That concludes my report. Next, I will call on Commissioner Graham to deliver the report of the Public Works and Facilities Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is concerning the access easement and shared parking agreement. I move that, this is from Commissioner Shum, "I move that the Board of Commissioners enter into an access assessment and shared parking agreement with LaSalle College High School. The access agreement is a cross-assessment over properties owned by both Springfield Township and LaSalle College High School that will permit access to existing and proposed parking for each entity. In addition, the agreement permits LaSalle College High School access to specific off-street parking spaces adjacent to the proposed public work facilities and the existing Springfield ambulance facility if and when the Township employees vacate the parking spaces at the end of a typical workday."
Is that your motion?
That is, that is the motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? Well, in favor?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Just, just for clarity, we're talking about this access road, which will be adjacent and parallel to the new municipal building. and parallel to the new municipal building, municipal building works.
The Public Works.
Public Works Department, yes.
Current library site.
Okay, just a point of reference for everybody who's watching and listening at home.
Because they have their lot back there.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? On favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Please record unanimous vote. Does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. I'd like to call on the Chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Standish.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Move on to the Chairman of the Zoning Committee, Commissioner Daley.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following zoning hearing petition will be heard on Monday, March 28th, at 7:00 P. M. at the Springfield Township Middle School. The petition is for Dennis Brookshire, 8 Erdenheim Road. Erdenheim is requesting a variance to reduce the front yard setback from 30 feet to 25 feet to construct a second-floor addition to his residence. That would be my announcement. Mr. President also asked, on Monday night, we were provided with a schedule of the billing for Bucks County Water that'd be coming out to the residents.
Yes.
Is it possible that the Board would be inclined to post that on the website as well to avoid any confusion with the residents, have an email blast?
That'd be great, to maybe do a blast, too. And then for those of you, hopefully it'll be a little obsolete by the time this gets on TV. Where we are is, we're now, the sewer, which was sold, is now being billed on a monthly basis. Right now, we're in March, and nobody's gotten a bill, but we owe for January, we owe for February. They will be billed on a monthly basis. We were told, but not by us, by Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, we were told the January bills went out last week, maybe they didn't, and that the February bills are about to go out. They wait till they get the water usage for the previous month, and then the March bills won't go out until a week or two into April. So you, you may get two bills within a couple of days of each other for different months. You might want to wait a couple of days after you get the first bill. But we'll send out a blast to clarify that and maybe update that, since, anybody here gotten one yet?
No.
No, we were told they were mailed late last week.
Thank you.
That's a good idea.
That would be my report, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Daley. Let's move on to the Chairman of the Cultural Resources Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. My report is on recycling last month, and I'm pleased to announce that during the month of February, Springfield Township residents recycled 187.5 tons of materials with a household participation rate of 78.6 percent. The net cost for the month was $17,053.74. That is my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Finally, we turn to the Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have one item this evening concerning Hawthorne Lane. I move that the Board of Commissioners amend the Springfield Township Code, Section 107-32, Schedule 9, Parking Prohibited, to prohibit parking on the east side of Hawthorne Lane from its intersection with Papermill Road to a point 600 feet southerly thereof, and to prohibit parking on the west side of Hawthorne Lane from its intersection with Papermill Road to a point 620 feet southerly thereof. Most of the aforementioned areas are already posted to parking, however, the recommended prohibitions will prohibit parking along the entire municipal campus frontage along Hawthorne Lane, which will help in the short term to discourage contractors for the municipal campus renovation project from parking on Hawthorne Lane. In the long term, the parking prohibitions will encourage patrons of the Springfield, of the Township Library to utilize the off-street parking. That is my motion.
Thank you, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? On favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. That ends our committee reports, and that brings us to the final period of public comment. Is there any further public comment? There being none, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
So.
So do we have a second?
Second.